Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of April 10, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we have been enjoying the future Signers of America from Fort Myers High School under the direction of Mrs. Brittany Montano. This club consists of 9th through 12th grade students who are enrolled in ASL (American Sign Language), which is a foreign language. Many of our students will go on to make interpreting their life vocation. The club members meet at least twice a week -- twice a month and have previously performed at local football games, Pride and Patriotism, Art Fest, and more. American Sign Language is a three-dimensional language that many people across the nation use to communicate. In fact, it is the third-most-used language in the United States, and the users are not solely the deaf community. It also includes their hearing friends and family, interpreters, others with language delays or communications difficulties. The possibilities are limitless with this real-time, through-the-air, language modality. Their mission is to spread awareness about the deaf community. A little-known fact: People who are deaf prefer to see themselves as "language minorities" with a full, rich culture instead of a disability group. Deaf cultures share ASL at the heart of things, but also includes deaf art, deaf literature, and poetry, and a shared set of values and beliefs, and ASL as a performance art, which hearing audiences should be able to enjoy it well, as well. At this time, the future Signers of America will sign one more song. What a beautifully expressive way to begin this evening's meeting. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a brief pause if you all would like to leave. This evening's student representative is Joan Ruiz, a junior at East Lee County High School. She participates in the dual enrollment program and should have her AA degree by spring of 2019. That's awesome. Joan is a Level III cadet in her school's Criminal Justice Academy, a sergeant and explorer post-18 of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, leader of Faith Lutheran Church's youth group, leading them to raise over $4,000. She has been newly inducted into the National Honor Society and is currently the number-one ranking junior at her school with a 4.79 weighted GPA and number-three school-wide. Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you for being here. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one recognition, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include two resolutions, two items under executive services, four items under academic services, five items under business services, two items under human resources, eight items under operations, as well as five items under superintendent's recommendations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. LaRiviere will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Join me. Father God, I just thank you so much for tonight and the beautiful display of one of the different elements of diversity we have within our school district, within our community, and our world. May we find joy and appreciation for each one, for each language that is spoken, whether it be verbal or through sign, via the air. Father God, help us to find treasure and joy in all people. I ask that you would be with us tonight as we are making decisions regarding our students, our schools, our staff. Pray that you would guide us in all decision-making. And Father, I pray, and especially lift up to you those students as they are beginning to face end-of-course exams and then upcoming FSA aspects, Lord. I just pray that you would give them confidence and the ability to shine, just like they do every day in their schools. Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Sergeant First Class Vincent Mitchell of Dunbar High School's JROTC program. Sergeant First Class Mitchell entered the Army in 1989 as a finance specialist. His tours of duty include Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Operation Enduring Freedom, and Operation Iraqi Freedom. Sergeant First Class Mitchell, a graduate of North Fort Myers High School, began working as a JROTC instructor at Dunbar High School in August of 2013. Welcome.
Thank you. The national colors are presented tonight by Cadet Jalissa Norris, the Dunbar High School JROTC Brigade Command Sergeant Major. Cadet Norris is a junior and a member of the National Honor Society with a weighted GPA of a 4.4. She is the drill team commander and recently led three teams that competed in the Florida State Drill Competition. Upon graduation next year, Cadet Norris will be joining the United States Marine Corps. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. I would like for Mr. Tommy Doyle, Supervisor of Elections, as well as Artemis Call, David Frere, and Juan Diaz from the Elections Office, and Principals Jackie Corey, Christian Bueno, and Robert Butz to join me at the lecture. Each year, the Lee County Supervisor of Elections office invites all public high schools to participate in its High School Voter Registration Challenge. This outreach has been successful in registering thousands of new young voters since 1999. This year, the following 16 Lee County High Schools participated: Cape Coral High, City of Palms High, Cypress Lake High, Dunbar High, East Lee High, Estero High, Fort Myers High, Ida Baker High -- excuse me, Ida S. Baker High, Island Coast High, Lee High Senior High, Mariner High, North Fort Myers High, Northern Palms Charter High, Oasis Charter High, Palms Acres Charter High, and South Fort Myers High. Once each school's voter registration applications were verified, processed, they were tallied against the percentage of schools' eligible students. The high school with the greatest registration percentage was selected to display the traveling trophy during the coming year. The board members and the superintendent are pleased to welcome Mr. Doyle, who will announce the winners of this year's High School Voter Registration Challenge.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the school board for having us here and for the district to allow us to go into schools and to demonstrate, to educate, and register future voters. And this is a result of a great team. Artemis, David, and Juan are probably one of the hardest-working education service departments in the state of Florida. They also have 15 part-time patriots that helps with the registrations across the county. Fifteen high schools throughout Lee County participated in the High School Voter Registration Challenge, and I will start with the third-place recipient is Mariner High School, and Robert Butz will accept for the school. They were able to register 15% of the eligible voters in their school, which was 139 students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
How was the percentage?
15%, 139 students. The second-place finisher registered 19%, which amounted to 188 students. The second-place recipient for the annual High School Voter Registration Challenge is Island Coast High School, and Michael Hours here is -- oh, Christina, I'm sorry. You know, the thing about what we like to do is, and Artemis will tell you, that education is key, not just trying to get people to register, to vote, because now we still have so many people sitting at home not voting. And it's a proven fact that if you vote for the first time, you're eligible, you will make it a lifetime habit. So we love the education part, not just registration. We know that's important, but education is most important. Artemis also goes to middle schools. We bring him into our Elections Operations Center. They get rid of the intimidation of voting on the equipment, and it's a very exciting time for Artemis and her crew. First place and the recipient of the traveling trophy is Lee High Senior High School, where they registered 34% of the -- And that's 426 students. Jackie Corey, bring the trophy down. Congratulations to a great accomplishment.
There's 426 students registered.
Excellent.
That's much.
That is a lot.
That's not so good.
That's a key to success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ruiz, are you going to read the character word for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sol?
The character word for April is integrity. Adhering steadfastly to a personal sense of honorable and ethical behavior, a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." The design you see displayed on the screens was created by Adrian Viergas, a 12th-grade student at Dunbar High School.
Is that what you're working on, Jason? Okay. Well, let's move on, Jason Loz, that we can stop and -- Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Morgan, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so, after being warned by the meeting chair, may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Time law for speakers: three minutes. Ms. Morgan, I have two cards this evening.
Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not fill out a blue card and wishes to address the board? Is there anyone on the left side of the auditorium who did not fill out a card and wishes to address the board? Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, please read the first name.
Louis Navarro.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. Lou Navarro, retired teacher of Lee County School District, 40-year resident of Lee County, born and raised in Sarasota, and a graduate of USF and FSU grad school. I'm happy to be here tonight. Last week, I attended a Sarasota County School Board meeting. The superintendent and one of the board members got into a 45-minute argument over school safety and the sheriff and what he was going to be doing for school safety. I'm glad to see this board respects Dr. Atkins, and you respect each other, so I want to say something positive for change. I'm again addressing the teacher shortage and have submitted an article from the Miami Herald saying they want to have teachers housed in schools. I guess they're the old abandoned ones to stay because they cannot afford rents. I don't like that idea, and I think we've talked about housing here in Lee County. This is not the U.S. Army with barracks. If everybody paid a decent wage to these professionals, you would not have this problem. All the years I spent teaching, I always felt we were underpaid, mainly because, like the news press article showed today, women get paid less than men, and the gap is closing, but it's not closed. Why build schools on this tax increase that's proposed when we're not going to stock or be able to fill the positions with professional teachers? Next, I want to address the school board email for the purposes of supporting the sales tax. I brought this up two weeks ago, and I've not seen any more letters from the superintendent or the Public Information Officer on this topic. However, the district email was compromised again by a candidate in District 4 who wrote to everyone in the district supporting his election. These things are totally unethical, in my opinion, and I filed a complaint with the Florida Elections Commission on this individual. You need to take a good look at your email filters. I would suggest that. I just can't agree with that. I taught all my life, and we never talked politics. That was the rule. All right. Thank you very much, and again, I'm happy to be here. I might go back to Sarasota next Tuesday night and see if they all settle down. Thank you.
Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to Atlanta, Georgia, and spend the week there as the city of Atlanta celebrated the 50th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination. As I stood there Wednesday evening, I was about 10 feet away from Dexter and all of his children and grandchildren, his whole family was there gathered at the King Center. It was really a magical moment. I love that quote from Dr. King, and I want to talk about, you know, what have we done in the 50 years since Dr. King's assassination? We have a school district that regret now that the majority of the student population are black and brown, but the majority of his administrators are white males. We have a school board that since at least '96 has had a continual majority of females, white females, on the school board, but that diversity has not reflected in your staff. You had a situation recently where an African-American woman with a PhD decided, for some reason or another, to leave the district. She had worked here for many years as our chief financial person. That person was replaced with a white man. He doesn't have a PhD. He doesn't have any of the qualifications that the board approved. You know, you all have a job description that you approve. The superintendent comes before you, and he brings these people who don't fit the criteria that the school board has approved the job description for. And this is not the first time this has happened with Greg and even with Nancy. So I want the superintendent to tell me tonight, tell the public. I know you said you don't get into personnel issues, but we have a right. You're asking us to vote on a referendum to raise our taxes. I think we have a right to know. Couple questions, Greg. What's the qualification? I know Melissa Giovannella asked you this question. You didn't give her the answer. I'm asking you. I'm a citizen. What's the qualifications of the man that you took and made as your Assistant Superintendent of Finance? We have another situation with Greg, with William Law. William Law's an African-American. He used to be the top person at this position. William Law told Melissa Giovannella he was the whistleblower. He said, "Look, there's a situation we're dealing with the FEMA thing." The second the superintendent found out that he was the whistleblower, at that same -- the next meeting after that issue came out, the superintendent formally took his position away from him, put him over there in transportation. Now, it was interesting, because Mayor Fisher was supposed to meet with the whistleblower. Melissa met with the whistleblower. None of the other board members seemed interested. At the meeting that Melissa brought this issue up, you all were more concerned about why she was bringing it up and the method in which she brought it up than whether or not we were going to get FEMA reimbursement. We have a problem in this school district, and just having these little meetings and everybody going along to get along and hoping that nobody sees what's going on, I think you're going to be in for a rude awakening. We need Pam and we need Steve to represent their communities, and their communities need diversity in this government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, thanks for your comments and positive comments about the board. Nice to hear. And your comments about the teacher shortage and our battle to find teachers, recruit teachers, and keep teachers for the growing student population. I'm not sure I understood your comment about politics and emails, so I'm going to ask that you meet with or that Dr. Atkins have somebody call you to talk to you about that. And Mr. Thomas, thank you for acknowledging Dr. King and your comments. And we don't respond to personnel questions. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pool for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? I have none.
I have just one.
Okay.
Where are my notes? The G2.
What is it?
5G2.
What page is that on, please?
4G2.
Is it 4? I'm sorry. Number 4. Page 4, I'm sorry.
Page 122, I believe.
Thank you.
Oh. I didn't do that.
Wait a minute, where are we here? Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Mr. Toiber?
I have none this evening.
Ms. LaRiviere?
I have none.
Dr. Cuckle? And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of item 5G2 on page --
Similar.
Sorry? Oh. So moved by Mr. Toiber?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fisher. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We have one pool to address. Item 5G2, and I'm sorry, what page is that?
5G2.
5G2.
Okay, and that's page 122.
Page 122.
Is there a motion for the pooled item?
Superintendent's recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Atkins?
I recommend board approval of the following ranking for construction management service, for RFQ, for MMM High School East Zone, Suffolk Construction Company, Owens Ames Kimball Company, Golf Point Construction Company, Gilbane Building Company. Approval authorizes the district to enter into negotiation process and authorizes superintendent execute all related documents. In the event negotiations with the top-ranked firm are not successful, approval is recommended to proceed with negotiation execution of a contract according to the order of the ranking.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion for the pooled item?
So moved.
By Mrs. Fisher, second.
Second.
By Mrs. LaRiviere. Discussion.
Okay, I am actually in support of this, but I just want to caution because Golf Point is actually the one building -- they're number three on the list, and I understand that, but they're also the one building Benita High School. And I want to caution that us, because I would think under the preconstruction and during that, they would have been scored. Because of preconstruction with Benita, we've had issues, and I don't want to foresee that to happen if, for some reason, Suffolk's contract doesn't come through or Owens Ames Kimball, and therefore puts Golf Point in third place to be moved up to first. So I just want -- So I just want to bring that to the board's attention, that we need to be cautious for our community in selecting, making sure that in preconstruction phase that we don't have the same issues that we had with Benita. And that's all. I'm in support of it, but I just want to bring that to the attention. I was surprised to see it on the list. That's all, really. That's really all I had.
Mr. Toyber?
Well, and I don't know, Ms. Givinelli, if you don't know anything, something that I don't know, but during the process, it was Gulf Point that helped point out some of the deficiencies that gave us the knowledge to know that we had to revise our process, that nothing that they did contributed to any of the issues that we had. In fact, they helped us with the value engineering to get us to where we are now at 15, under the $60 million mark. So to me, I think what they did was more than exemplary in the fact that when we had the process steps, missteps, and we redid the process, they waited and allowed their time schedule to get tighter. And then they also helped us with the value engineering that allowed Scott and his team to actually achieve what this board directed to do, was to get it under value. And at this point, our construction is actually in the middle of it, as far as state, you know, per square footage. We're in the middle of the per square footage values, and if you take away the ones that are cheaper than us, have more student stations because they get the value of scale, we're actually the cheapest dollar per square foot value in the state of Florida. And I think a lot of that is attributed to the workmanship and the collegial nature between, you know, RGM and our contracted management team and the school district. So I think if Gulf Point happens to make it, you know, all four of those are very good. There's a matrix that they use, but I think all four of them would do an exemplary job on Eastley County.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Ms., Dr. Cuckel?
I'd just like to add to that. I agree with everything that Mr. Toyber said. On the other hand, we obviously have had a policy of sharing around with different construction companies the workload, the work that we have to be done. And so I want to make sure that we take that into consideration when we're making our selections, too. Yes, I agree.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming April 22, 2018, as Earth Day, as well as April 22 through 28, 2018, as Administrative Professionals Week. Dr. Atkins, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignments that were approved under the consent agenda?
No assignments at this time or appointments.
Okay, thank you. And superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Atkins?
A first recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the ITN for Site Preparation Improvement to American Management Resources Corporation and Pavement Maintenance LLC as indicated in the attached tabulation sheet. The ITN will be effective for the period of April 10, 2018, through April 9, 2021, at an estimated expenditure of $700,000 for the first year, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods upon the written agreement of the vendors and the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the estimated expenditure of $1,800,000 for the contract for aluminum walkway covers and entry canopies and canvas walkway covers and entry canopies to Architectural Metals of Southwest Florida Inc., Coastal Contracting of Florida LLC, and Marco Canvas and Upholstery LLC for the period of May 2, 2018, through May 1, 2019 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel, seconded by Mrs. Givinelli. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to piggyback Charlotte County School District bid for catalog discounts on a multi-line educational product awarded to multiple vendors from April 10, 2018, through March 13, 2019, at an estimated expenditure of $800,000, with an option to cancel deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all documents.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Givinelli. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the instructional materials planned for the year 2018-19, which will include the adoption of K5 Science, McGraw-Hill, at a cost of $2,442,000. Six through eight science, Pearson, at a cost of $1,584,000. Nine through 12, Anatomy and Physiology, McGraw-Hill. Biology, Harcourt, Houghton, excuse me, Mifflin. Chemistry, one, McGraw-Hill. Earth and Space Discovery, Environmental Science, Harcourt, Houghton and Mifflin. Brain Science, McGraw-Hill. Physical Science Discovery, Physics, Harcourt, Houghton, Mifflin, at a cost of $2,4,600. The total estimated cost of the current adoption year based on estimated enrollments is $6,030,600.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Dr. Cuckel. Any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, I would just like to thank staff and the community members who volunteered to review these series, and I look forward to the students enjoying the new information in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Last recommendation, I recommend board approval of the increase of the expenditure with Procore Solutions plus consulting for an additional cost of $600,000. The total estimated annual expenditure will increase to $850,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
By Mrs. Fisher, or Mrs. LaRiviere, and seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Board member comments, and I think I'll start with Ms. Ruiz, our student representative.
Okay. So I just want to give a huge thank you to all the school board members for allowing me the opportunity to attend this meeting and present our student body. Having a student's perspective on issues concerning their school is critical in resolving those problems in an effective way. This board has and continues to do a great job in listening to their students. I know that with the amount of diversity that is often seen in Lee County schools, that can prove very difficult. Everyone looks to this board to, you know, resolve the issues that are facing our youth. And I think that especially with everything that's going on, whether that has to do with violence or, you know, race issues like Mr. Thomas brought up, you guys are doing, you know, the best you can. And I know our students appreciate everything you guys do for us because we know that you guys do the best. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Fisher?
Okay, I'm just going to make one comment this evening regarding a longtime school teacher from Gulf Elementary, Mrs. Anita Norman, who taught school in two different color high heels until she was 80 years old. And today, at the age of 97, she went home.
Mrs. Givinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica? Mr. Toyber?
Thank you. And I, following up with Ms. Fisher, I missed our last meeting to talk about a very dear friend and a beloved colleague, Dr. Eleanor Sorica. She died up in, her home up in Bethesda, Maryland, on March 23. Dr. Sorica served this district from 2002 to 2010. All eight years she served with me. She was a phenomenal young, phenomenal lady, young in heart. We used to call her the Steel Magnolia. She was fluent in four languages, had a very big passion for the arts. She had her PhD from Case Western. It was a very, very intelligent and capable woman. She came to us after she had been the superintendent of the Asha Bula Schools up in Ohio, and her and her husband Dominic came down to make a difference down in Lee County and the difference they made, both of them as they worked the community and did what they could to serve our community for the entire time they were down here. In 2003, Dr. Sorica, because of her passion for the arts, she actually created and devised up a program called Pride and Patriotism of Lee County, which is now a nonprofit organization which allows our youth to participate in a writing exercise of a particular subject. It's usually typically a different war or era in our history, and they write about it, and the certain grade levels compete against one another, and then their awards are given to them through an event where the symphony and the arts perform, and veterans actually provide all the awards. And it's quite a moving event, and it's been in its existence now for over 14 years, and it's still thriving. And I encourage everybody, if you get a chance, to really have a wonderful evening of pride and patriotism to attend that event. So I just wanted to give my condolences to the family, to the Soricas, and just pass it along.
Thank you.
I have none.
You have none?
I have none.
And I have none. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Ms. Morgan, board members, I would like to request a closed attorney-client session in the lawsuit in which the Lee County School District is one of a coalition of school boards challenging the constitutionality of House Bill 7069. That case is captioned as "The School Board of Olatchua County et al. versus the Florida Department of Education et al." And the purpose of the closed session is to seek your direction with respect to strategy relating to litigation expenditures. The session is tentatively scheduled for April 24 at 1:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins?
Just one quick announcement. I just wanted to mention the recent passing of Dr. James Douglas Moser, or Doug Moser, of Atlas Shae, Florida, longtime educator and principal in this school district. Dr. Moser was the principal that actually hired this young lad into the school district 30 years ago. So he took a chance on this Ohio boy, and I will be forever in his debt for taking the chance on me. I had the opportunity to recently attend his 80th birthday. It's one of those, you know, those things that fate puts in your pathway, and, you know, we got to talk, you know, kind of go down memory lane a little bit, and that was not very long ago, just a couple months ago. So I'm so glad I made, was able to attend, I was invited. He was happy and vibrant, and, like I said, we told some great stories back and forth. So he will certainly be missed here in Lee County and out on Pine Island where he lived for many years.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board on Tuesday, April 24, there is a school board workshop at 2:00 p.m., as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00, and there will be a special meeting at 1:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Toyber?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Cuckel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.